Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the July 1st, 2013 meeting of Waukegan City Council order. Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beadley.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Please stand for your vacation.
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, we thank you for the aldermen, we thank you for our city as a whole. Tonight, we'd be remiss if we didn't pray for those firefighters down in Arizona. Pray for the families and the children. Pray for our city and all of our citizens in the name of the Father of all creations. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we go to executive meeting for a matter of personnel matter.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moiseo. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a short break to go into executive session to discuss a matter of personnel. We'll be back very shortly. Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Moiseo. Halls in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to read a statement. "Good evening. I know many of you have come here tonight in light of the recent news articles pertaining our chief of police. I would like to address this matter and tell you what I have done to ensure that Waukegan Police Department is focused on what's most important, which is addressing crime issues and working in every community to keep our families and children safe. Today, I asked for and received Robert Kocorion's resignation as Waukegan's chief of police. I have appointed current deputy chief Wayne Wallace to serve as chief of police in the interim basis as we begin our search for Waukegan's new chief. Robert Kocorion will return to his former rank of commander and will continue to serve this community as he has done so well for so many years. But in spite of the outstanding record of service in Waukegan, it has become clear to me that this has become a distraction that would potentially stand in the way of Waukegan Police Department's ability to deliver on its primary mission to serve our community and to keep our neighbors safe. That is not a risk I want to take, so that is why I ask for his resignation today. Robert Kocorion is an exceptional public servant who has given more than 25 years of his life in service to the residents of Waukegan. I respect the work he has done in this community and believe that his commitment to Waukegan and its police department is unwavering. However, he and I both agreed that it is in the best interest of our community and the Waukegan Police Department that he stepped aside at this time while continuing to serve, albeit in a different role than we had envisioned when he was appointed. As mayor, I have the responsibility, as your chief executive, to offer to make decisions which are in the best interest of our city as a whole. I trust that these decisions will allow not only the city of Waukegan to move forward, but will also allow Robert Kocorion and his family to return to a sense of normalcy. Next is audience time. The first is the River Bend group, Carl Luce, 15, I'm sorry, 5760 Churchill Lane.
My name is Carl Yost, and my family resides at 5760 Churchill Lane in Waukegan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We moved our family to the River Road corridor in Waukegan in 2004 by choice. We wanted our children to be able to experience the balance of the quality public school education they have received from Libertyville, the natural and open setting of the River Road corridor, as well as the culture and diversity of a city like Waukegan. This we chose, but we did not design it. It is a result of the planned annexation by Waukegan many years ago. Had that annexation not occurred, the setting of schools, environment, and community described earlier would not have existed to such an extent that we would not have purchased our home in Waukegan. My family has also spent a good deal of its time and financial resources in Waukegan. We have served and financially sponsored soup kitchens at Holy Family Church, sponsored and participated in Waukegan Park District athletic events, and through Catholic charities on Lewis Avenue, been involved in numerous Waukegan community-based programs. I don't say this for the recognition. This was all part of our decision to purchase our home exactly where we purchased it. We like to think we maintain a dual citizenship, part Waukegan and part Libertyville, as we believed the Waukegan annexation had envisaged. That's my family's story. Why is it relevant? It's relevant because in the next 10 minutes, people just like me, who have resided in Waukegan's River Road corridor, some for one year, some for 20-plus years, who quietly and judiciously pay their taxes, operate Waukegan-based businesses, and selflessly volunteer in countless Waukegan endeavors such as Habitat for Humanity, Art Walk, Genesee Theater, Clockwise Theater, Scoop and Genesee, Waukegan Main Street, Staben House, and countless more will share with you their objections to a divisive zoning proposal you will consider tonight. These objections represent not only the objections of these Waukegan citizens, but the objections of over 400 Waukegan residents who executed and lodged petitions with the city over one year ago. Many of these citizens are here tonight. Respected aldermen, we pray for your thoughtful consideration of the presenters, the hundreds of constituents they speak for, and for the sensible development of the River Road corridor and Waukegan at a time when Waukegan needs unity and service from all of its citizens. Thank you."
My name is Mike Boyd. My wife and I have lived at 1521 South River Road for 28 years now. It's a five-acre parcel that's located south of the proposed development.
My phone.
South of the proposed development and north of Daybreak Farms subdivision. I would like to ask you to consider the zoning precedent that would be established if you grant the R-5 zoning to the Astors on River. The properties on River Road that are south of the Astors and north of Daybreak Farms, of which my property is one, have a minimum of five acres, and many of them are substantially larger than the five acres. Obviously, these parcels could be developed in a similar manner as the Astors. Once the R-5 zoning is in place, the zoning precedent is going to be set, and Waukegan would not have the legal authority to block attempts by other property owners seeking the R-5 zoning for their properties. If a property owner decides to sell, they would want to maximize the value of their property, and to do that, the owner and/or the buyer developer of their property would petition Waukegan to zone their property as R-5. It is my understanding that several property owners here are prepared to submit R-5 zoning applications to Waukegan if, in fact, the Astors on River zoning request is approved. If a number of properties along River Road that are south of the Astors were, in fact, rezoned R-5, the effect on River Road would be multiplied exponentially. There would be a huge increase in traffic far in excess of the increase that's going to be experienced with these proposed developments on Aster. And the rural nature of this entire River Road area is going to be lost forever. I urge you to deny the requests that are before you tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks. Make sure the clerk gets one.
I am considered a real estate expert in Lake County, having been one of the leading agents in Lake County for over 25 years. I would like to share with you the data I just gave you. I do not for a moment believe that this development is the highest and best use of this property. If you look at the data, the attached homes have seen incredibly decreased value. Many of the projects have failed. Most of them have seen declining values of minimum of 50 percent. If you open it up and look at the first two pages, you can see a single-family development in Regency Woods, which is Waukegan, two miles from this project, and you can clearly see that the decline during the difficult market has been minimal, maybe 10 percent. The single-family homes are selling much higher and much better than the attached homes. The problem with the attached homes is many. First of all, this particular project is brownstones. Brownstones are three floors. You come in, and you have your garage and some type of family room. You go up a flight of stairs, that's your kitchen, your dining room, your living room, and then the third flight is your living quarters, your bedrooms. If they're targeting the empty nesters, heck, I'm not walking up three floors of stairs. I'm not bringing my groceries up a flight to get there. Clearly, in Libertyville, Grayslake, and Vernon Hills, they did this project, and it failed in all three communities. Libertyville brownstones went bankrupt, the Vernon Hills Aspen Point went bankrupt, and the Grayslake one actually succeeded reasonably well. In the peak of the market, they built them across from the train station. A lot of investors bought in thinking it was a great place. They paid $250,000, and they now sell for $112. 50 percent of them are rented because you can't, I just rented one for $1,200 a month. Association dues are $200 a month. Association dues, another topic. The single-family, young family, they're not buying these. They want a yard, they want a playset. The association dues will buy them in the low-interest rates, a monthly payment. The association dues are $200, $200 a month. $234 a month will buy $50,000 worth of mortgage. They can spend $50,000 more and get their single-family home with their yard, their dog, and their playset. Why are they buying a brownstone? And the trendy group, the young ones, the first-time homebuyers, they're not coming out to the country. The whole trend is to be in town, in city.
Ms. Brooks, I'm sorry, that's three minutes.
Okay, two minutes. So...
No, ma'am, that's your time.
The last prob, I'll give you one last example. The brownstones in Libertyville failed because of financing.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, it's three minutes.
Because of financing, just one second. They failed because of financing. I marketed them. There were five-unit buildings. We sold the first five. We could not sell the second building.
Point of order.
Mayor Alderman, my name is Wayne Taylor. I reside in Waukegan at 5510 Fairmont Road. The revised Astors on the River development calls for I-5 zoning and 139 units. This is a 60 percent increase in the entire River Road corridor home sites, despite being less than 5 percent of the land. On January 23rd of this year, in a memo to Mayor Sabazin, the City Council, and the Zoning and Planning Commission, Russ Tomlin wrote, and I quote, "The proposed density on the subject site is too dense. We have suggested to developer that the number of units can be decreased to a minimum to at least 130 units." He goes on and says, "The developer's planner agreed at the last minute that those changes could be made, but no revised plat has been submitted, and that shows these changes." On the same date and to the same parties, Steve Saboran wrote, "Staff cannot forward a recommendation until the following items are addressed, and these items could force substantial change to the existing preliminary plan." There's more than 20 mandates in there, but includes an amendment to the existing sewer agreement with Lake County, signed agreements with Warren Township, Woodland School Districts, a significant reduction in the rowhouse-type townhomes, and relocation of other units to meet some of their concerns. Since that time, the developer has complied with none of the Waukegan staff recommendations just highlighted. We all know the right time to negotiate these agreements is before approval is granted. We hope the City Council will reject this overly dense proposal. A mere 10 percent reduction in density is meaningless, given the 240 percent increase still being requested. It exceeds the maximum density recommended by the city staff and addressed none of their concerns. Approval would send a message to the development community, prospective residents, prospective businesses, that Waukegan is open for business in an anything-that-goes format that does not protect its loyalty and existing consistency. Please vote no to this zoning application. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan Tim, and my family and I reside at 5561 Churchill Lane in Waukegan. In 2005 and 2006, a team of Waukegan residents, ecological and development experts, and Waukegan city staff developed the guiding principles for the River Road corridor. In 2006, the Waukegan City Council adopted these guiding principles for the River Road community to prevent overdevelopment. They adopted these principles because they recognized that the master plan from 1987 was out of date for this unique area. Since these guiding principles have been adopted by Waukegan, many people have bought homes along River Road, and many residents have invested millions of dollars in improvements in their homes. All of us made these investments primarily based on three factors. First, our confidence in the leadership of Waukegan. Second, our reliance on the adopted guiding principles. And finally, the existing trend of development along the River Road corridor. By approving any zoning beyond the existing R-1, Waukegan would be violating its adoption of the guiding principles, guiding principles that were ratified by the City Council, and they would compromise the existing trend of development. It's been our desire to remain in our Waukegan homes despite opportunities to move elsewhere, including into Libertyville, where we would enjoy similar quality of life with the same school districts and a lot lower real estate taxes. In making our decisions, many decisions, many citizens, sorry, have relied on Waukegan's leadership, these guiding principles, and the existing trend of development, and Waukegan would be going back on its word by rezoning this property. Some may say this rezoning indicates Waukegan's open for business, but what type of business does Waukegan want to be open for? The wrong decisions are bad business, and by approving this rezoning, Waukegan would be sending the wrong message. They'd be sending a message to future citizens and developers that this is a legislative body that makes the rules as it goes instead of remaining true to its word and to its constituents. I urge the City Council to keep its word and vote no on this proposed rezoning. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, my name is Joe Morrison. I'm an attorney here in Waukegan, right across the street, and I represent John Tames and Nichols and Dimes Homeowners Association. You have heard a lot about this development, and I'm not going to stand here and repeat everything that has been said. But I have a concern, which I want to express, in terms of helping you make your decision. And that is that there is a concept in the law known as spot zoning. Spot zoning is defined as a change in zoning that applies only to a small area, that zoning which is out of harmony with the uses and zoning in the area. Now, some of the cases have said, "Well, you look to the comprehensive plan, and if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, then perhaps even if it's not within the uses and zoning in the area, the city was planning for that use, and therefore it's not spot zoning." But obviously, does not apply in this situation. The comprehensive plan is outdated. It's from 1987. It shows this area to be office and research. But yet, in 2006 or 2007, this council said no to 80 lots on this property, no to 80 lots, and said, "No, we're only going to allow you to annex the property for 41 lots." The owners of the property agreed and entered into an annexation agreement with the city. The prior subdivision was then recorded. The sewer agreement, which provides the sewer for this property, only allows for 41 lots, and that wasn't finalized until 2011. The actions of the City Council in annexing and zoning this property have indicated that it will abide by the plan for this entire River Road corridor area, and that plan is for low-density, single-family residential. That's the trend of development, that is the zoning there, and that is exactly what has happened in the past attempts to develop this property. And I would urge the City Council to consider those factors in arriving at its opinion, and hopefully you'll vote no to this proposal. Thank you.
My name is Suzanne McDonald, and my family resides at 5401 Fairmont Road in Waukegan. We have lived in Waukegan for 21 years and raised our family there. I'd like to speak with you tonight about the impact the proposed rezoning will have on public safety, the environment, and the already crumbling road structure of River Road. Police, fire, and ambulance service to the River Road corridor are already overburdened. In recent years, 911 service calls to the River Road corridor have taken in excess of 30 minutes to answer. This is documented, not conjecture. The density created by the Astors on River and future projects will only compound this issue. It is a liability to Waukegan. It is a liability to one's conscience. Citizens should not be deprived of basic emergency services. In addition, River Road residents and Independence Grove consumers use River Road to walk, bike, exercise, and enjoy time with their children, parents, and others. River Road was built for rural traffic, not for the already current cut-through traffic it presently endures and which has crumbled the road into its current state, if you haven't driven down it. Adding thousands of trips per day to the River Road solely for the Astors on River proposal will crush River Road and add significant repair and maintenance costs to Waukegan's currently compromised budget. I urge you to vote no on this project.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. My name is John Ennis, and I reside at 5411 Fairmont Road in Waukegan. This September, we have lived there 10 years. And before I begin, I just want to say that over the years, I've had interactions with many of the folks on the Department of Public Works, and appreciate the services that our family and our neighbors actually enjoy from that service. For my particular comments, I would like to reemphasize that Waukegan's intersection at River Road in Belverde is already known to be one of the most dangerous in Illinois and one of the most dangerous in Waukegan, and it will become even more deadly. Since 2008, this intersection has been classified by IDOT as one of Illinois and Lake County's most dangerous intersections. The current rezoning proposal increases the traffic volume by 75 percent. There is no realistic, cost-effective means to physically alter this intersection. And in fact, if you hang your hat on the self-serving traffic studies from the developer, where even their own professionals grade the intersection as a quote-unquote "F," or wishful thinking of the developer's planning consultant, then some teenage kid, elderly person, or kindergartner is highly at risk of fatality at this very intersection. The developer, the state, and city have no answer for this intersection and the danger it presents to the citizens. If you compound this with the zoning precedent that will be set, and you can readily and I think reasonably conclude, rezoning beyond R-1 is not only dangerous, it is irresponsible and potentially deadly. So I'll finish by saying that left-turn lanes will not fix any part of this problem. Increased traffic density from R-5 development will only make it more dangerous. And that concludes my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Lynn Pousatieri. I reside at 2000 Tremont Court in Waukegan. The year of 2008 will go down as the worst year of my life. I was having serious heart problems and spent most of the year in and out of Northwestern Memorial Hospital. In the early morning hours of the fall of 2008, I awoke from asleep, gasping for breath. I quickly woke my husband, and he turned and woke my son. They immediately called 911 and were told an ambulance was on its way. The minutes seemed like hours as I struggled to breathe. The room started to fade to black as more time passed, and both my husband and my son could not understand why it was taking so long for the ambulance to arrive. I heard my husband yell to the 911 operator that it was past the 10-minute mark, but we were assured that they had been dispatched and they were truly on their way. The room started to fade to black, and I looked over at my son and my husband for what I thought was the last time, and told them that I loved them. Finally, as my vision began to fade out of the corner of my eye, I saw the lights of the ambulance. I lived behind River Road. I couldn't believe I made it. The paramedics were ushered in, came to my side. After taking my vitals, I was whisked away, my nose garnished with oxygen, and I was on my way to Condell Hospital. I was later diagnosed with what should have been a fatal heart condition. It was called an anomaly of the right coronary artery. It was called an anomaly of the right coronary artery. This was a ticking time bomb that I was born with, and it required open-heart surgery. Sadly, since then, part of the surgery has failed, and I will require cardiac care for the rest of my life. The ambulance ride I described above was not my only ambulance ride and will probably not be my last. But I will tell you that if I have to go to the hospital, my family knows not to call 911 because I fear it will take too long for the ambulance to get there. Your vote tonight needs to consider how an emergency system that is already stretched with amazing paramedics, and I recognize some of you, and I do come from a family where a father, my father, has been 51 years a fireman at the Pleasant View Fire District in La Grange. Council members, if you pass this R5 zoning, which will increase the population, how will the jump station that is only manned by three instead of five take care of the increased population on the River Road corridor? In June of 2011, a grant was given to the fire department for $1.2 million. It was for two years, and it was only going to keep five firemen.
Ma'am, that's such a three minutes. I'm sorry.
I implore you to vote no and take the time to formulate a plan that cites emergency services that will keep me safe. Thank you for your time.
John at 1612 South River Road.
My name is John Taglaferro. I live at 1612 South River Road, Waukegan. I'd like to just speak a little bit to the zoning regulations that are published on the City of Waukegan website. Article 2, Purpose and Intent, 2.1, Purposes. The Waukegan zoning ordinance is adapted with the purpose of protecting and promoting public health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the people. The fulfillment of this promise is to be accomplished by seeking, 1, to lessen congestion on public streets; 2, to avoid undue concentration of population; 3, to prevent the overcrowding of land, thereby ensuring proper living and working conditions, and preventing the development of blighted slums; 4, to establish adequate standards for provision of light air and open spaces; 5, (laughs) excuse me, to facilitate the provision of adequate transportation and other public requirements and services such as water, sewage, schools, and parks; 6, to zone all properties with a view to conserving the value of land and buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the city; 7, to protect the residential, business, commercial, and industrial areas alike from harmful encroachment by incompatible use; 8, to avoid the inappropriate development of lands and provide for adequate drainage, curbing of erosion, and reduction of flood damage. I've skipped nine and 10. 11, to facilitate the recognition of beauty and aesthetics as a value and standard throughout the city; 13, to foster a more rational pattern of relationship between residential, business, commercial, and industrial uses for the mutual benefit of all. It's clear that the proposed development does not conform to any of the above-mentioned purposes set forth by the city itself. Furthermore, the zoning commission has previously not approved the requested zoning of the property and has done so because they have adhered to the city's published guidelines. There is no important need that this rezoning addresses. Therefore, if the City Council of Waukegan respects both its citizens affected and its own zoning ordinance, council members must vote to deny the request under consideration tonight. Finally, in the interest of transparency in government, I ask that all members voting tonight not only give their vote, but also outline their reasons for voting in their chosen manner. Thank you.
Mark Pleasant.
Mayor Motley, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. My name is Mark Pleasant. I live at 1047 Glenwood Avenue in Waukegan. I want to acknowledge that I appreciate, I respect, and I acknowledge the police service of Robert Kerkorian over the years. However, United States Navy SEALs and all of our military special operations warriors have rightfully earned their special place in American military history. That place is not to be trespassed upon. My involvement in this matter started with that belief. It ends with that belief. Thank you all.
Robert Morgan.
A long thank you. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for actually having the leadership to ask the chief of police to step down. It's a position of integrity, and there can't be any questions. That being said, lifelong resident in Waukegan, I'm old enough and young enough to have had Coach Mo and Coach Tempest as teachers in high school, lived here my whole life, been a homeowner for the last 10 years, 2725 line I rode. That being said, Waukegan isn't the Waukegan of yesteryear. In some ways, it's better; in some ways, it's not. The thing that got me out to be a little more active was my Second Amendment rights. I was here for the last meeting. Also, I hear a bunch of people here that are concerned about their property rights. I'm sure when the city was founded, and those beautiful manor homes down Sheridan Road and the Victorian homes and the other properties surrounding them, didn't think the city would be like it was today. My home values have also dropped. Last time I checked, it was 47 percent. It's not just yours, it's everywhere in the City of Waukegan. I think personally that there's too many trivial things going on that, the question of somebody's background for being the chief of police and whatnot, the crime statistics and the alleged reputation of Waukegan. I've lived here my whole life except for when I was in the military, and I've been all over the world. Proud to call the Chicago area my home, I'm proud to call Waukegan my home. I will walk anywhere in this city any time of day or night, not fearing my safety. I can't say it's the safest place, I can't say it's the least safest place, but the city's changing. This is the 21st century. Everything changes. You have to change. We have to be more proactive. We have to do what Gurnee did to take businesses from us. I remember my driver's ed simulator videos where everywhere around Warren High School was cornfields. It's not like that anymore. The City of Waukegan is growing and expanding, and things are changing. Is it going to affect me personally because they're not in my neighborhood? No. I do like to think that you guys have put the time and effort and leadership in to say whether or not this is a good proposal or not. That being said, the city needs to do everything it can to get back up on its feet. You know, we need to give everyone the resources that they need. We need to hustle and get businesses back here. We need to get the property values up. We need to hold the foreclosed homes, owners, banks, or otherwise, feet to the fire. We need to give the city, the police, the fire department, code enforcement, everyone the means and the means and concern to actually take into account that everything is changing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Collin Moore, 429 North Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, in light of the police chief's resignation, I would like to quote the second bullet point from the value statement in that hallway. It states, quote, "That public trust can exist only with our integrity, honesty, impartiality, and respect for one another. I ask the leadership of this fine city, where was the integrity and impartiality when it supported for far too long a police chief who lacked honesty? Was that any way to show respect to us citizens?"
Wayne Munn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. My name is Wayne Munn. I've resided for 28 years at 1517 North Jackson Street with my family. I am here because of the matter with the police chief, and I'd like to say that two front-page stories in the Chicago Tribune and multiple stories in the New Sun does not make for what I call a distraction. It goes far beyond that. And unfortunately, it seems clear that the decision here, I mean, I'm glad that I had to write updates to my notes, was based more on damage control than high moral or ethical standards. This is not what we want to see in this town. The delayed action by Waukegan's elected official in the matter of the misrepresentations made by the new police chief sends a message through the press that our elected officials see this matter as, "Okay, it's no big deal, and back to the good old days." I personally find that unacceptable. The greater issue is also that the past behavior, you know, I've worked in, you know, an office, and I've worked under a chain of command. How upsetting would it be to me to find out that somebody who was my superior had ethical standards that I did not consider I would ever atone to, and yet that was the person that I reported to? That does not build for a good, strong team, and I admire the entire Waukegan police force and the people I know from there and all the work that they've done. They deserve better. Also, many people, everybody here, has applied for jobs someplace. You see it in the paper all the time. Everybody makes value judgments over time. It's why my wife didn't come. And just because you've made a mistake doesn't mean you're a bad person. But at any time, if you put false facts on a resume or documentation, something that's not true, at any point in your career, you can be called on that, and that can lead to termination, immediate termination. And I guess the only thing that I want to say in summary is I'm glad this has come to a conclusion, but I would like to say I want the city council, all of our elected leaders, to take a very high road in moral tone and what you do because Waukegan has struggled, and I and many other volunteers probably in this group tonight have worked hard pro bono to make this town a better place, and it hurts us and angers us.
That's time. Sir, I'd like to respond to your statement. I have to tell you, we did our due diligence. There was no rush to judgment here. We did a complete investigation, myself, two attorneys, and we interviewed all the people involved in this. We interviewed the gentleman, retired police officer, who did his background check. We got all the facts together. It took us time to accumulate all that. When we got all those facts together and did interview the chief, we made a decision to sever our relationship with him as chief. There was no one trying to hide anything. I think you'll understand this, sir. I contacted every one of these aldermen and kept them abreast of everything that was happening. They knew what I was doing and why I was doing it. So there was no attempt to hide anything here. I was forthright in my presentation to the aldermen and to the attorneys. Once I determined that we could no longer exist together, I made the decision to sever our relationship. So please be aware of that, sir.
Okay, and thank you, Mayor. I, however, did not challenge that anything was being hidden, but I did disagree with the usage of the word, saying that you agreed with the police chief that this was too much of a distraction.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Diane Beretti.
Good evening. Diane Beretti, 2597 Club Home Lane in Waukegan. This is a difficult stand for me to take this evening. I have lived, my husband and I are family in Waukegan, the city, for 41 years. That's the real Waukegan. Kids went to Waukegan schools. We live in the city of Waukegan. However, I feel that as a Waukegan resident, I do need to stand and show solidarity with my fellow residents of Waukegan, whose way of life is being challenged and threatened. When Tom and I bought, we've lived here 41 years, we bought our current home in 2009, and one of the things that concerned us was the potential for having the zoning challenged there. And so I checked with several city staff members and was assured that that would not happen, that the city was determined to maintain the zoning that had been applied to that particular neighborhood. And so I feel that it's kind of a chilling thought for me to sit, and I come to every meeting, as you know, to hear this train of discussion and to anticipate that that's something that could possibly happen in my community, in my neighborhood. And so I must stand with these people from the Ninth Ward and request that you listen carefully and respond to their needs. On the other hand, I would also like to address those of you who live in the Ninth Ward. I heard what the first speaker said about his involvement in our community, yet I recognize almost none of you. I am extremely active in the Waukegan community, and I would love to encourage you all, as you have said and stated that you are Waukegan residents, I would love to have you stand with us as we work together as a community and as residents to make our city better. There are events, there are organizations, there are people in need, there are all kinds of ways that we are working together to make this a better community, and I would love to have even the residents of the far western Ninth Ward to stand with us in that as those of us in other wards are standing with you. You have most likely many more resources, many more opportunities to be influential, and you are just basically much more affluent than many of the rest of us. And we need you. You need us, and we need you. Thank you.
Calvin Mathis.
Good evening. My name is Calvin Mathis. I live at 528 Leith Avenue in Waukegan. I have a couple of concerns in the last couple of meetings. Kind of caught my attention with the gun ordinance, and we talked about the city budget and the taxes and the grass cutting. We got a lobby, we paid 90 grand to, and it's basic constitutional issues. But of course, in three minutes, I couldn't voice all of my concerns with that, so I'm just going to take the gun debates, which the last meeting, it got kind of heated, I thought, and people were talking about their Second Amendments and their right to bear arms, and it just kind of caught my attention because I could care less about if some -- somebody wants to carry a gun or not. But that got my attention, because it just seemed to me that there was some people who don't even live in Waukegan that came to Waukegan to kind of guide our laws, I guess, here. I was kind of thinking about, and even somebody even mentioned the Fourteenth Amendment, which really got my attention. I don't know what that has to do with the Second Amendment. But the constituents of Waukegan, and I'm being one of the constituents, this gun debate, I would hope that you do put something in place. I frequent Waukegan downtown every now and then. I'm not a constant downtown patriot, patron of Waukegan, but I do go downtown. And I would like to know that you do have something in place. And I just thought that you kind of backed down just a little bit with the, you know, the pounding of the podium and the condescending tone to you guys. There was a little bit of rudeness, I thought. And then, but more so was that gun clip. Now, that was something that I really got offended towards. In a city council meeting, you shouldn't be threatening, and I took that other threat, although he passed it down, and I didn't know what it was. I'm sitting over there, I can't really see. But if you say it's a gun clip, I assume that you have a gun with a gun clip. So that being said, I would hope that in the future, that we would take in consideration, you know, our safety sometimes, and when these issues come up. But more so, I just wanted to encourage the city council meeting to sometimes stick to their guns. At least, whatever you're going to do, keep in mind that you do have constituents in Waukegan, such as myself, who are supporting you and are behind any decisions that you make. Well, not any decision, but most of your decision. We're going to trust you as leaders.
Thank you, sir. That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie O'Meara.
Jamie O'Meara, 1318 Chestnut Street, Waukegan. I am here representing Waukegan Main Street, and I hope that our Ninth Ward visitors tonight understand and know who Main Street is. If not, talk to me afterwards. This weekend was a wonderful example of why it's great to live in Waukegan. On Saturday, we had the official grand opening of the Karcher Art Space Lofts. And on Sunday, we all, most of us, I know all of you, enjoyed the Independence Day Parade, sponsored by our award-winning Park District. Starting with the Park District, I would like to express my thanks to them. They, you, the Park District, make it fun to be a resident here. You give us culture and playtime and lovely gardens, all of which enrich our lives. And you give us bragging rights. And secondly, more importantly tonight, I would like to talk a little bit about the importance of the Karcher Art Space Lofts, the impact, what that means to us as Waukegan residents. I know the aldermen and the city staff understand, because we've all been working on it for many, many years. But I want to talk to you and to the people who might see this on YouTube or on the city website, or on cable. So why was the Karcher, why is the Karcher so important? Why do we keep talking about it? It's residential development down here in the heart of our downtown. That has not happened in a very long time. Residential development in a downtown neighborhood is tough. New construction on farmland is so much easier. To preserve the integrity of our town, this is what this did, retained our history and preserved an amazingly beautiful building. It helps us to retain a connection with our history, and that is such a gift. So many towns don't get that gift. The economic development value cannot be diminished. There's 36 new families living in our downtown, shopping in our town, paying taxes in our town. And they are establishing businesses in our town. They are artists. They are mostly self-employed. So thank you to Art Space for believing in us, trusting in us, and seeing something in us that many of our own residents don't see. And thank you to all who made it possible, you know who you are, the city people, the county people, the state people, and many of the volunteers, especially those who work with me on Waukegan Main Street. Without diminishing the importance of the Karcher, however, because in my mind, it can't be diminished, it's a wonderful, wonderful first step. However, what I would like to propose is taking the many lessons that we have all learned from this experience and decide, what do we do next? What is our next big venture? What this taught us all is we can do it. So what do we do next? It's up to us to decide that. Thank you.
Dennis Ruddy. Dennis?
I think I'm getting to be a regular up here. My name is Dennis Ruddy, and I live at 1844 South Matthew Court in Waukegan. This is my fourth trip to the podium, and I submitted written materials two other times at various meetings. This is something that I believe is very important as we look at a holistic view of what's important for Waukegan. Numerous issues have been raised. I'm not going to go into them. I think you all know what they are. But many of them haven't been addressed. We've taken a third rail approach to addressing some of those issues. In the, in the staff report, and a gentleman before covered this quite well, but just to give you the numbers, there were three conditions and 17 issues raised. And as near as I can tell, none of them have been addressed directly. And there's been no firm commitment or, or control put on this process that would ensure that they're all addressed. There's a, there's been a suggestion that the development will not proceed, that somehow this is a move to increase the value of this property. And from the developer's standpoint, I see nothing wrong with that. It's up to the officials in Waukegan and the other residents to put that in perspective. But there is a sunset clause in the zoning regulations. It's Article 3.8.6. And it says that if development doesn't proceed within 12 months, that the, that the council can require that the zoning be, revert back to the old zoning. I think as a minimum, even if you don't see your way clear to listen to the objections, I think as a minimum, that should be put into whatever actions are taken by the board. And then finally, I just want to give an emotional reaction. I think the compromise that's been presented is really a slap in the face. The zoning that's been proposed would increase the number of units on that, on that parcel by almost 400%. That's a 300% increase. The, the compromise would reduce that number by 12%. I think that's not consistent with what the mayor had in mind when he sent this back down for a compromise. And so, thank you very much for giving me
Thank you.
... another opportunity to speak before you.
Take the motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Mozo, to approve the minutes of June 17, 2013, for the regular meeting roll call.
Alderman May.
Make the motion. Go ahead. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Resolution, proclamations, presentations, appointments. I'd like to, there's going to be a presentation for the Fire Department Medal of Valor. Fire Chief, please, Mr. Chief Rico.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Rico Farrell, and I'm the very proud Fire Chief of the Waukegan Fire Department. First of all, before my presentation, I want you all to know that we, at the Waukegan Fire Department, we take our jobs very serious. We have five stations, we have over 115 members. We're more than capable of handling anything that comes in our line of duty. I want to say to the men that we're getting ready to honor, that are sitting right here on this front row, that first of all, I want you guys to know that I am very proud of you. I know that you guys are more than capable, you guys are dedicated, you're loyal. I want you to know that I love each and every last one of you. As a proud citizen of Waukegan, when I go to sleep, I don't worry, because I know that you guys are on duty. You guys are on shift, you're ready to go. And I want you to know that you're second to none, bar none. So with that being said, I want to thank Mayor Motley and City Council for allowing this time a presentation. I've been working for the Waukegan Fire Department for over 29 years. I'm proud to be a Waukegan firefighter. I've wanted to be a Waukegan, I wanted to be a firefighter ever since I was nine years old. So I am doing my passion. I'm serving and I'm protecting. And if there's any doubt in your mind, I want to rest for sure that we got your back. We'll protect you. We serve and protect. Waukegan is one of the finest fire departments in Lake County. I want you to know that. On May 9, at the Illinois Falling Firefighter and Medal of Honors Award in Springfield, in the presence of Governor Quinn and Secretary of State Jesse White, eight of our firefighters received prestigious, two prestigious awards in the Act of Courage and Bravery. Two awards that they received was the Firefighter Excellence Award and the Medal of Honor Award. At this time, I would like to present to you a video presentation.
From the Waukegan Fire Department, a unit citation which will be accepted by Battalion Chief John Schmidt. Also from the Waukegan Fire Department, firefighter paramedic Tom Klassen, Lieutenant Laura Hayden, Lieutenant Jack Long, firefighter paramedic Neil Olson, and firefighter paramedic Scott Repick. To our recipients of the Firefighter Excellence Award, thank you very much for your service. The Firefighter Medal of Valor is given by the State of Illinois to a firefighter for an act of heroism and bravery, which clearly demonstrated courage and dedication in the face of danger while in the performance of their duty. Please listen to this heroic Medal of Valor stories as read by Max Armstrong, Commissioner for the Lisle Woodridge Fire Protection District.
It's always with a sense of wonder that I read through these incident reports. I get to see, in some instances, the official incident report. But whether it's that or just a description of what transpired, I'm always struck by the gross understatement, it seems, of what actually took place. It tends to veil the drama, the intensity of those few precious moments when these individuals acted. All in the line of duty, I suppose you, men and women of the fire service, would say, all in the line of duty. But I think to those of us who see what transpired there, we see that there were exceptional people doing exceptional things. Firefighter paramedic Dustin Reinders, firefighter paramedic Rick Van Horn of the Waukegan Fire Department. On a Friday last November, about 11 o'clock in the morning, the Waukegan Fire Department was called to a house fire on Jenkins Court in that Lake County community. One of the callers to 911 was a young child who told the dispatcher in both Spanish and English that a little girl was still in that fire. Waukegan Fire first sent engines, two engines, a truck, a squad, an ambulance, and a battalion chief, with Engine Three and Rescue Three, first to arrive at that ranch-style home, and they found heavy black smoke pouring from the basement. Senior firefighter paramedic Rick Van Horn and firefighter paramedic Dustin Reinders knew that a child was reported in that house and that a basement search was needed. They knew also that they were going into an area without the protection of a hose line. Their captain, Captain Decker, supported their decision to search the fire floor without a hose for protection, knowing that time was of the essence. In the words of Battalion Chief John Schmidt in the official report, and I quote, "They all knew that it was time to risk a lot to save a lot." And they did. Firefighters Van Horn and Reinders, under the intense heat and the heavy smoke conditions, did their search in that basement, they found the victim, and radioed emergency traffic that they were coming out with a young child. Battalion Chief Schmidt said this fire was a tough fire, like all basement fires are. But this was complicated, by the word that there was a child trapped there. He said the actions on the fire ground were what he called "an excellent example of teamwork, skilled performances, and clear and level-headedness, rescuing a victim under those difficult conditions in less than 10 minutes' time from the moment they were dispatched to the scene." At this time, it is our distinct pleasure to present the Firefighter Medal of Valor Award to firefighter paramedic Dustin Reinders and firefighter paramedic Rick Van Horn of the Waukegan Fire Department.
To the recipients of the Medal of Valor, once again, congratulations and thank you for your service.
There are thousands of fire departments in the state of Illinois and thousands of firefighters, so this is a prestigious award only given to a selected few. Beside me here, I have my comrade and buddy right here, John Schmidt, Battalion Chief John Schmidt. We both started the same day, April 9th, 1984. I remember when the mayor appointed me as the Fire Chief, I spoke to John and I says, "John, I need you here with me." He says, "If you want me to stay, I'll be there with you." So with buddies like this, I feel assured that everything will be okay. The Firefighter Excellence Award is a award that's given to a service of firefighters in the line of duty, demonstrating athleticism and professionalism in the service of the citizens of the state of Illinois. We have six recipients. At this time, we're going to call those six, they are Battalion Chief John Schmidt, Lieutenant Laura Hayden, could you come forward? Why don't you guys stand right there? Lieutenant Jack Long, firefighter paramedic Scott Repack couldn't be with us tonight, firefighter Tom Claussen, and firefighter paramedic Neil Olson. In addition to that, the two firefighters that received the most highest award, which is the Medal of Honor Award, are firefighter paramedic Dustin Reinders and firefighter paramedic Rick Van Horn Jr. At this time, I would like Battalion Chief Schmidt, who was there on the scene, to just give a few words, sir.
Thank you, Rico. I think the Commissioner already said, actually, what happened that day, and these guys did a great job, and as a commander, that's all I could wish for. We did it all in nine minutes and 38 seconds from the time we received the call until the child was out of the house, which was, on the fire-ground situation, is remarkable. What a lot of people don't know is that I submit this, and it's my determination whether I think this is above and beyond the call of duty. And then a group of individuals, similar to myself, make that decision whether these guys are worthy of that award, and I think they were. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'd like to read resolution. Honoring the recipients of the state of Illinois Firefighter Excellence Award, whereas Battalion Chief John Schmidt, Lieutenant Laura Hayden, Lieutenant Jack Long, firefighter paramedic Tom Claussen, firefighter paramedic Neil Olson, and firefighter paramedic Scott Repack served the Waukegan Fire Department with honor and distinction. And whereas these six were recognized by the state Fire Marshal Larry Makitas and Governor Pat Quinn and firefighters throughout the state at the 20th Annual Illinois Fallen Firefighter Memorial and Firefighter Medal of Honor Awards Ceremony at an event that took place in Springfield on May 9th, 2013. And whereas they are among 13 firefighters that received the Firefighter Excellence Award for an act of service in the line of duty, demonstrating excellence, professionalism in service to the citizens of the state of Illinois. Now, therefore, be it resolved that a suitable imbibed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the recipients of the state of Illinois Firefighters' Excellence Award, along with a certificate of achievement from the city of Waukegan for their dedication and service to our community, dated this first day of July 2013. Signed, Wayne Motley, Mayor, Art Yancey, Clerk. Resolution honoring the recipients of the state of Illinois Firefighter Medal of Valor Award, whereas firefighter paramedic Dustin Reinders and firefighter paramedic Rick Van Horn served the Waukegan Fire Department with honor and distinction, and whereas these two were recognized by state Fire Marshal Larry Makitas and Governor Pat Quinn and firefighters throughout the state of Illinois at the 20th Annual Illinois Fallen Firefighters' Memorial and Firefighter Medal of Honors Award Ceremony at an event that took place in September, took place in Springfield on May 9th, 2013. Whereas they are among four firefighters that were recognized for acts of heroism or bravery that clearly demonstrated courage and dedication in the face of danger, and now, therefore, be it resolved that a suitable imbibed copy of this resolution, signed by mayor and city clerk, be presented to the recipients of the state of Illinois Firefighter Medal of Valor Award, along with a certificate of achievement from the city of Waukegan for their courage and devoted service to our community, dated this first day of July 2013. Signed, Wayne Motley, Mayor, Art Yancey, City Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is indeed an honor to me to have the privilege to present these brave firefighters with these awards. Coming from this environment, it means a great deal to me to see these people being awarded what they do every day on a daily basis with courage and conviction. I'm so proud of them. And also, ladies and gentlemen, I want to tell you this, it was my honor to have one huge gentleman at Fire Station Long, and it should never have a meatball per fight firefighter.
The next order of business is to reappoint Peter Zaragosa, Vera Wilson, and Charmaine Harris to the Waukegan Public Library Board. Are they, any of those individuals present? I take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Beedling, to make the appointments to the Waukegan Public Library Board. Roll call, please. These, the terms are up, that's why we're doing this now, sir. Uh, no, sir, they're staggered, but they put them all together. I'm sorry, I don't know that, Larry, but I will find that out for you. Okay, this will be a voice vote, as presented. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next thing on the agenda is a Greater Purpose Charter Academy presentation.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us to come and speak to you tonight and tell you about a charter school that we are working on for Waukegan. I'm going to start by introducing myself and the members that are of the board that are here with me tonight. My name is Rebecca Riddle. I'm a resident of Waukegan and also a teacher in Waukegan Public Schools. Sandra Bankston is here with me tonight, she's a member of the board, Mariso Solano in the back, Steve Alley, and Emily Ginta. Our chairman of the board, Dan McKinney, wasn't able to be here tonight, but he asked us to present to you and let you know a little bit about our school that we're working on. Sandra's going to start, and then I'll give you a little bit more information about the school.
Good evening. As Rebecca said, I am a Waukegan resident who's a member of the, or has participated with the Greater Purpose Charter Academy design team. Earlier this evening, someone during the public comments section asked the question, "What's the next thing for Waukegan? Now that we have the Carter Hotel, the art space, what's the next thing?" And I submit to you, the next thing should be looking at the educational issues in Waukegan. We have a fine school system with many wonderful programs. My children have, I have raised four children here in Waukegan who participated in Project Discovery, the Fine Arts Programs at Cook, and the Gap Program. There are many wonderful things to offer, but at the same time, there are many children who fall into different gaps that don't fit into certain programs, and we need other things to supplement. Why is education issue for all of us, whether you have children or not? Because when people come into a community, they don't look at, the first thing they don't, they look at is not whether or not you have a movie theater, or if you have fine dining, you want to know, do you have a fine school system? It's going to affect your property values regardless if you have children or not. So it's important to every single one of us who resides in Waukegan to make sure that we have an educational system that supports every single child, so that everyone has an opportunity to have, to have their educational needs met in a way that they can learn, because we do know that every child can succeed. So this evening, Greater Purpose Charter Academies would like to share with you some of our ideas about how to make education accessible for every child in Waukegan, and not to change the structure, but to come along and supplement what is already being done. Waukegan is in a renaissance movement right now, and we believe education is key to facilitating that movement.
Thank you, Sandra. So I'm going to briefly just give you a overview of our team, what we've been doing so far, and how we look to move forward. First of all, we've been meeting for a couple of years now on the, with many people. We have educators on our team, there's parents, community members, an accountant, an attorney, and also fundraiser specialists. We've, like I said, we've been meeting a lot, and we have committees that work bi-weekly, working on real estate, working on curriculum, trying to get the community involved in really supporting our school. One organization that we've worked with, or are working with, is the Illinois Network of Charter Schools, and Ann Levy Brown has really helped support us and make sure that we are developing a good school for our community, as well as the IFF, which is, helps with financing for nonprofits. One of the fun things about starting the charter school is having the opportunity to visit a lot of schools around the country. We've visited two schools in particular in Albany, New York, Brighter Choice for Girls, Brighter Choice for Boys, very successful charter schools, in addition to several charter schools in Chicago. We have worked on hosting community forums, trying to get input from parents and community members. We've also met with many, many people. Dan McKinney, our leader, has probably met with many of the people on the board, as well as in the community, just trying to work on getting support, making sure that what we develop is going to be good for our students. I'm going to briefly tell you six things that we stand for. First of all, character education, very, very important that our school and the students in our school and everyone involved has character, as well as community involvement. One thing that charter schools often do is really partner with the community and work with many organizations, bring them into the schools, have volunteers work. Leadership development is another pillar that we really believe in. Health and wellness education, language and culture, we do want to have a dual-language program, so that the students have the option of becoming bilingual, bilateral, and bicultural, as well as, in addition to academic excellence. Our mission for Greater Purpose Charter Academy is to really empower boys and girls with the knowledge, skills, and character necessary to serve as thoughtful, courageous civic leaders in the Waukegan community and beyond. You'll notice that we do say "boys and girls" because we want to start a charter academy for girls and a charter academy for boys. It is going to be an elementary school, kindergarten through fifth grade. As we move forward, we hope to submit our proposal this fall to the school board, and they do need to approve it. Once the proposal is approved, we'd like to open the doors to the school next fall, so 2015. Yeah, or no, 2014. Yeah, 2014. And we really need to find a location. That's been one of our challenges, is we've looked at many, many buildings in Waukegan. The idea would be first to rent for the first three years, because we're going to start with kindergarten and first grade, and then grow one grade level each year. So we want to start small, but we do need a building, and we hope that we can get some help from community members and the board as well. And then we also need support from the community. We do have a website, we've been talking to parents, we need to get parents to sign intent to enroll forms, which don't mean, doesn't mean that they're going to be accepted into the school, because it is a lottery, but it just means that if the school opens, that they would like to sign their child up. All of the ideas that we are coming up with this, for the school, have been researched and taken from other schools that have been very successful, and one of those things that we want to have in our school is, we want it to be an expeditionary learning school. What that means is the kids, it kind of follows the outward bound model, where there's a lot of exploration, and it really allows students to be engaged, build their character, and also achieve. If you have any questions or suggestions, comments, we would love to hear from you. Any of us will be here to answer questions afterwards, and this is the contact information for Jerry, one of our members, who was not here tonight, as well as Mariso and myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee, Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening has been, before we, you know, start the Judiciary Committee reports, referring to especially Item A. Earlier this evening, you know, the developer had asked me if I could hold this matter over. Also, Corporation Counsel has come to me and asking me if I could see if we can amend the amount of units that was opposed. At 139, to amend it to a certain amount of units that the developer can come down to. Now, I know there's been a lot of, I've heard, believe me, I've heard everyone here, and you have legitimate concerns. you have legitimate concerns, but what really, you know, pardon my expression, but what really ticks me off is, is that I'm like the only person on an island. I've heard everybody that is opposed to it, but yet, I haven't heard anyone, anyone supporting development, supporting the project. It's unbelievable. Hold on, please.
Point of order.
I haven't heard anyone, you know, just to come up here and support the project. So, I am going to ask if we can amend the units to go down to a certain amount, or whatever the developer can come up with tonight, so we can vote it. I was told that if I held it over, that it would be, you can't, first of all, it can't be sent back to the Judiciary Committee, it's already, was sent back already. That if I were to hold it over, it would come back as presented again, you know, with the 139 units. If I'm not mistaken, Corporation Counsel. So, for Item A, I'd like to see that amended to whatever the amount the developer can come up, you know, if I can have the developer come up here and say something and speak on this matter, if that's okay with the mayor.
Alderman Rivera, I made my position very clear two weeks ago, when I sent this back to committee, that you would have two weeks to get a number that you could get passed at the City Council. Obviously, that has not occurred. I don't know that I can support going back to another number. They had two weeks in order to get this done. Here we are, two weeks later, with the same number and the same problem. We all know where the votes are. I've counted them seven times myself. I know who's gonna support it, I know who's not gonna support it. My particular opinion is that the number they choose, unless it's 41, will not be passed. That being said, I think this is a discussion that y'all, Corporation Counsel, needs to address. I'm not sure that we can change that at the last minute. Corporation Counsel, sir?
If we, if we hold it over, it's gonna come back in the same dimensions and the same ordinance proposed that it is tonight. It's not gonna change in transition from two weeks from tonight. Secondly, if, the only way it can change the unit, this body has the authority to change the units that they approve relative to what has been submitted. If this body chose to go below 139, you have the authority to do that, it would need six votes from the council to amend the ordinance on the floor and submit it in a lesser number. But other than that, it's been presented, it went to committee, it came back to committee, it's back on the floor. It can either be held over, or voted tonight, or come back in two weeks, exactly in the same form, or tonight, if there's amendment proposed, you can amend, you can propose an amendment, and if it passes by the sixth supermajority of the council, it would be presented as amended with a lesser unit number.
Well, then I so moved to amend the proposed unit, the number amount of units.
To what number, Alderman?
130?
Motion made to amend the number of units from 139 to 130. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please. Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
No.
Alderman Conkin?
No.
Alderman Moiseo?
No.
Alderman Beedling?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
No.
Alderman Tempass?
No.
Alderman Rivera, we are now at the original motion. Item A on the agenda under Judiciary.
Item A, adopt an ordinance as presented, approving zoning calendar 2382, the preliminary plan of the planned unit development for the Astors-on-River development located at the southeast corner of Belvedere and River Roads.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
No.
Alderman Conkin?
No.
Alderman Moiseo?
No.
Alderman Beedling?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
No.
Alderman Tempass?
No.
Failed, Your Honor.
Item B, adopt an ordinance as presented, approving zoning calendar 2383, the map amendment from R1, single-family residence, to R5, limited general residence for property located at the southeast corner of Belvedere and River Roads. I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
No.
Alderman Conkin?
No.
Alderman Moiseo?
No.
Alderman Beedling?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
No.
Alderman Tempass?
No.
Failed, Your Honor. Motion fails.
Item C, adopt an ordinance as presented, approving zoning calendar 2384, the vacation of River Glen subdivision located at the southeast corner of Belvedere and River Roads. An I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
No.
Alderman Conkin?
No.
Alderman Moiseo?
No.
Alderman Beedling?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
No.
Alderman Tempass?
No.
Failed, Your Honor.
Item D, adopt an ordinance as presented, approving the amendment to Chapter III of the city code regarding alcoholic beverages. An I so move.
Can somebody explain this? Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco.
Let me explain, this is in regards to the BACIT that the city code requires, but there's also an opportunity in the market that they can get their BACIT training, as long as it's certified. It doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, the certain certification only. They can go out in the market now, like on the internet, and as long as it's certified, they can present that to the city, as far as city certification. And they needed that language to be put in the city code ordinance.
So just so I'm clear, I'm assuming that the BACIT training no longer has to go through the CLC?
There's other forms that are out there?
Right. There's other avenues that they can go to.
Will it be those other avenues, obviously, will they be state sanctioned, I'm assuming?
Right, exactly. As long as they're state sanctioned and state certified, they can definitely, it could definitely be used for, to get their liquor license and...
And just so I'm clear too, is there anything to do with changing of the liquor times or anything? This has nothing to do with that either?
No, I don't, go ahead, please. Yes, the yacht club, that's right, that's correct. The yacht club has a, what is it, DV or...
Ann?
Yes.
Come on, Ann.
Right. This is a two-part amendment to the liquor licensing ordinance. The Alderman absolutely explained BACIT or equivalent. We're just adding those two words, so that people can get other certification from other entities, and it's not necessarily called BACIT, but if it's equivalent, that's acceptable. And then the second portion is an amendment to the DB liquor license, which is only held by the Waukegan Yacht Club, and it allows, right now, their license allows them to sell package to members only. And this change would allow them to sell package to people that are not necessarily members, but for instance, people going on charter crews, something like that. That's the change.
I have a question.
And that's at their request.
So, Alderman Beedling?
How long has this been in existence, this BACIT training?
You know what, I cannot answer that question. It's been in existence for a while, probably at least 10 years. We just started requiring it last year. So, before this new 2013 license year, everyone had to have BACIT certification, and they had to give us a card showing that they had all been certified, before they could renew their license, or get a new license coming in, they always have to show the certification now.
What does it cost?
It depends, and some are more expensive. So I think it's about $100. We did offer free BACIT training here at the city hall on three different days back in last fall, and quite a few people did take advantage of that. But there are various purveyors of the training, private and public, and there are different costs, depending on what they choose.
Do you know the reason they started this in the first place?
You know, Alderman, I don't know the history, no. It's a Beverage Alcohol Sellers and Servers Education and Training is what it stands for, and it's a training so that you can identify. I did sit in on the first training that the state gentleman gave last fall, and it's so that you can identify underage people that might be trying to buy alcohol and other things along those lines, fraudulent IDs, those kind of things.
Does all 50 states have this, or is this just...
I don't know.
...particularly Illinois?
I don't know. And again, it's not a requirement in all cities, but BACIT was required by you all last fall, and we found that there were some other equivalent training programs that would be the same as BACIT, and we had just not included that language in our ordinance. So it's really more of a cleanup to say, "or equivalent." If they have something else that is the equivalent, then that would be acceptable.
Do we have a large problem in this community with serving underage drinkers?
Occasionally, there are problems along those lines. The police department does, they do sting operations for underage service on a, you know, probably a quarterly basis, and sometimes there are problems, and we issue tickets to the owners of those businesses, and also the individuals that do underage service. Hopefully, going forward, now that everyone has to be trained, that won't be as much of a problem.
It just seems to me, you know, it's one more regulation on top of other regulations, and it never ends. It's just something more and more, and there's always a fee attached to it, or it's a make-work job for someone, and we overburden ourselves with a lot of these things. I grew up, you know, I think underage drinkers have been served since the beginning of time. I don't think it's a huge problem, that I've seen, at least in my younger years, they seem like they carded people pretty good, and it's very difficult to acquire alcohol underage. Doesn't stop someone that's of age from buying it for a minor, right? They don't have BACIT training.
This training focuses on helping the sellers and servers recognize a good ID and a person that's, you know, legally able to buy alcohol. But again, the amendment tonight really is actually broadening of the regulation. The previous ordinance that was passed last year by the city council said BACIT, and then we realized that it needed to be broadened a little bit. So there are other available trainings, and that's what this amendment does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should all have a copy of the ordinance.
And it was also provided, of course, to Judiciary Committee as well.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempass?
Aye.
Passed, Your Honor.
Item E, adopt an ordinance as presented, approving the amendment to the Waukegan sign ordinance.
Who is this?
On an annual basis, the Finance Department mails renewal notices to current business license holders. The current process of the Planning Department advises the finance staff of the signed permit renewal to attach to each business license holder, if applicable. As these vary based on size, sign size, attaching the fee to a business license account is a manual process. The total average annual revenue generated from the signed permit renewal fee is $97,000. Here are the issues. Of the 33 municipalities surveyed, only five, including Waukegan, require an annual renewal fee on a signed permit. Two, in addition, our initial fee is well below comparable. Three, lastly, the billing and the collection of the renewal fee may imply the business owner is in compliance with the sign ordinance. Now, the recommendation that the staff made, which was also signed by the mayor, a staff that is comprised of the, of our department heads. Their recommendations were, the annual renewal fee is eliminated from the city code, and the initial signed permit fee is increased. The goal of this all is to reduce the time staff spends annually billing and collecting by implementing the revenue-neutral solution of increasing the initial application fee. This will also improve customer service as the fee is paid one time, and eliminate the potential misperception that payment of a fee indicates compliance with the city's sign ordinance.
I'd like to say that when I took office, this was on a priority that I instituted. Thank you, Tinas McGalski, you did a wonderful job, Kevin. Ann Lynn, you did, all of you did a wonderful job. What we're doing here, attempting to do, is streamline the process. The next three ordinances do that. It makes it much simpler for someone to come into our community and get involved in the business much faster and much, much easier. So thank you. Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman May?
Yes, aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conkin?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempass?
Aye.
Passed, Your Honor. Thank you.
Item F, adopt an ordinance as presented, creating the Outdoor Special Events Board. An I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please.
Let me explain this one here as well. The city requires groups holding special events, including parades, to apply for a special events approval. The current process requires the review and approval of the Development Review Board, DRB, for any special event application. The current process right now is the administrative staff in the Public Relations and Marketing Division takes in the application and makes the rounds to all pertinent departments for preliminary approval. The Building Commissioner then convenes a meeting of the DRB to review and approve the application. The issues, here are the issues. The city code calls for the city clerk to take in and process special events applications, and the DRB's core function is for development projects, not special events. The current process involves parties not involved in the actual special event functions, has proven to be cumbersome and lengthy. The recommendations, reinstitute the clerk's office as the starting point for the application process, create a special outdoor events and parade board chaired by the Director of Community Development, and staffed by the Police Chief, Fire Chief, Public Works Director, and Director of Public Relations and Marketing, or their designees. The goal is to streamline the special events process and involve the departments in the approval process, who will engage in manning the special events itself.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
I have a...
Your Honor, you have a question? I'm sorry. Mr. Beedling, Alderman Beedling?
More like a comment. Our parade application, it doesn't define what a parade is... Our parade application, it doesn't define what a parade is. I looked around at that, and I found one city, City of Geneva, defines what a parade is. We have a parade here in the fall that last year, it went on for close to an hour tying up Washington Street. There was maybe two floats, three floats in the entire parade. It was just a long line of cars and trucks. There was an enormous amount of litter thrown on the street. Nobody utilized the garbage cans there. If not for fist picking up all the trash, we would have had one heck of a mess come Monday morning. And I would like the city council to address perhaps a parade ordinance defining what a parade is, so we can ensure that these things are more orderly in the future.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just briefly address that. Our outdoor special events and parade ordinance, this is separate ordinance, it's been in place since 2005, and it does define what a parade is, and it's very specific as to the process to obtain permits for either a parade or an outdoor special event. The ordinance that's before you tonight is really just creating a new, smaller board that will only be in charge of permitting those, reviewing them, and deciding what city services, if any, are necessary, and then addressing and issuing permits for those events. Right now, as the Alderman said, the Development Review Board is tasked with doing that, and it really is a very cumbersome process. But we do have another complete ordinance that's very good on outdoor special events and parades. And I'd be glad to share it with you, Alderman.
I read it, I picked it up from the clerk's office, right? That's where you got one?
Yes.
I looked it over, and it doesn't really define anything what a parade is in there. It's...
I'd be very happy to talk to you about it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Pass, Your Honor.
Item G, adopt an ordinance as presented, making amendments to the general business license of the City of Waukegan. From the time of application to approval, the process can take 14 days if the location passes, building and fire inspection, or up to 26 days if a reinspection is necessary. A specific review of areas suitable for improvement is detailed in this memorandum that everyone should have read. The current process, the Finance Department receives the business application and submits it to the Planning and Zoning to verify the business fits the zoning for the location. The Finance Department also submits the application to the Police Department for review and approval, including criminal background checks as required by city ordinance. Here are the issues. Of 33 municipalities surveyed, only four, including Waukegan, required criminal background checks for general business licenses. Furthermore, the current city ordinance does not have a clear due process procedure in place in the event a business license application is denied based upon this criminal background check, leaving the applicant with filing a suit in civil court as their only recourse. Recommendations: change the ordinance language regarding criminal background checks from shell to may. Add language to the city code which allows a denied application to appeal the decision to the mayor, which is similar to the current liquor license language. Three, establish planning department office hours each business day where the finance staff may offer business applicants to the planning department for a same-day review process and immediately schedule for building department inspection. Four, combine the planning and zoning and police review into one step, which includes reviewing the business against a list jointly developed by the Chief of Police and the Director of Community Development to determine which type of business should be subject to a criminal background check and which should not. The goal is to reduce time business application and reduce the number of city staff unnecessarily involved in the process.
Again, what this did, thanks to Ms. Smigalski, Kevin, and Ann, it reduced the time to get your license almost by in half. So it's a benefit to the city, it's a benefit to the potential business, that we do this as quickly and effectively as possible. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
I have a...
Alderman Beedling, go ahead, sir.
I'm a little troubled with the provision in there where if someone's denied a license, by the better judgment of the board, for lack of a better term, that they can go to the mayor and you can override the decision. I just, I find that somewhat troubling.
I think what happened here is, we discussed this during the committee meeting, and what occurred that prompted this was, we had a gentleman who had a pending court case. There was no conviction, and therefore he was denied due process. We were denying him the opportunity to have a business license, although he had not been convicted. This now allows that to occur. Tina, can you address that, please? Kevin, Tina, Kevin?
All right. Good evening, everyone. So again, all these changes are being submitted with, to follow that vision, to make it easier for businesses to come to Waukegan and open up. This appeal to the mayor is mainly to go in agreement with our liquor license ordinance, which is already in place. So we're just following that same ordinance and the same logic there. And that's pretty much what it is as far as that recommendation there. Just proposing that it goes with the ordinance that we have already in place for liquor license.
Okay.
Any more questions? If not, motion by Alderman Rivera, Second Sergeant Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Pass, Your Honor.
That concludes the Judiciary Committee reports.
Public Safety Committee, Alderman Conkin, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Safety Committee met tonight at 6 o'clock. We had three items on the agenda. Item A, Public Safety recommends, and ISO move, that the proper city officials be authorized to purchase cell phone forensic equipment from Celebrite USA Incorporated at 266 Harris Town Road, Suite 106, Glen Rock, New Jersey, 07452, for an amount of $10,584. This equipment will be purchased from the Narcotics Asset Forfeiture Fund, line item ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Pass.
Item B, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO move, that the proper city officials be authorized to purchase six Fuji Police Bicycles from Midwest Bicycle and Billiards in Waukegan for an amount not to exceed $7,949.16. This equipment will be purchased from the Narcotics Asset Forfeiture Fund, line item number 296-629-626494. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye, but I also have a question. Alderman, what do we have left in the forfeiture fund?
Tina?
The asset forfeiture fund's a special revenue fund, and it's controlled by federal guidelines, how you can expend it and how you record it. This year, we only appropriated $175,000 in expenditures, but the current cash balance is more around $1 million. The funds do have to go through an audit process every year to make sure that they're expendable for the certain purposes. So we have $175,000 appropriated, but $1 million currently in balance, but it is very restricted to its use.
Very good. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
And item C, the final item, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO move, that the proper city officials be authorized to purchase one dog, drug-detection canine, Beagle, from Tops Kennel in Grayslake, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $6,500, which includes the canine, all initial training, one year of follow-up training, and this equipment will be purchased from the Narcotics Asset Forfeiture Fund, line item number 296-629-624-697. And like it says, I laugh because it says, "This equipment, it's a canine, it's a Beagle." ISO move. It's gonna be a future officer, I think I'm naming him Puddin' in this one.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Only I if his name's Snoopy.
What?
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye, for Puddin'.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Pass, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. That'll end the Public Safety Committee items for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Next is the Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, request permission to discuss and join the Solid Waste Agency of Lake County, an ISO move.
Is there a second to that?
I'm seconding it.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman May.
I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Tempest, please.
Oh, boy, here we go.
Here we go.
Here we go. A lot of questions have not been answered in what I'm reading. I don't think the article I got from our Public Works gave me all the information I need. We belong to the Solid Waste Disposal of Lake County many, many years ago. We paid them an upfront fee, a one-time fee that was supposed to take care of us for a lifetime. Then they came by and they decided to assess us a dollar per household. They assessed this taxing body. And we pulled out because we said, "You have no right to assess us. We joined at one time, and it's supposed to be free. And you're supposed to create enough money." They get money from the TIFs at the landfill. They get TIF money back from every tonnage that we dump in there, they're getting a cut back from that landfill site by ordinance. We all, here also, it says, "Don't tell us our voting rights." At one time, we were on the executive board, we're one of the largest populations in Lake County, and yet a little town with 500 people had the same vote that we had on the solid waste disposal. That's wrong. That hasn't been addressed yet. That has not been discussed yet. Do we vote on the director of it, who's gonna run it? What voting rights do we have? We used to appoint one alderman to the mayor. Another point, it says here, you're talking about agreement with the recycling center. Gentlemen, we're being paid right now, we're paying to get our recycled material picked up by Onyx, and we gave them in the contract, which gave them, they could have all the rights to recyclable profits. And they've said they would reduce the idea of what it's costing us to pick it up. That garbage contract is up for renewal soon. I think jumping in with SWACO too soon is not good. Here it says how much money they pay you for their recyclable goods. Well, we don't get anything. What are you gonna do? Haul them out there? Onyx is gonna pick them up and haul them out there? Well, that is not in our contract right now.
I am the volunteer.
That's not in our contract right now. Onyx gets all of them. Can you come to the mic, please? What? Viola, what is, Onyx, they keep changing names.
It's not Onyx or Viola anymore, it's a band.
Well, it's another one, I know, they keep changing. But still, we have a contract with them.
Yes, we do.
And at one time, I remember when somebody out there didn't want the stuff being dumped out of city yards. We had electronics dumped there at one time, but we didn't want the problem. Now, all of a sudden...
You are, you are correct.
I know I'm correct, I don't lie.
No, Alderman, let me, I'll let you, I'll let you say what you have to say, and then I'll, then I'll answer it.
Okay, you came up, okay. Scrap drop off. Waukegan would be a prime location for a scrap drop off. You know, the TVs, I know the TVs are a problem. We put them on the curb, we got the little hackers coming around, they break the TV, take out what they want, and it sits. We also have the privilege, we had an idea, we could take them out by your place out there, but they don't want them anymore. Too many came with holes in them with the good stuff taken out.
And it costs us, I think, a nickel a pound, isn't that what it is, to drop them out your place?
No, it was free of charge.
Can I, can I?
It was free for a while.
It's not a nickel, it's not a nickel.
Your Honor, Your Honor.
You know, to me, we have not, to vote on this tonight, I'm gonna have to hold it over, you got too many questions that have not been answered on this. Are we gonna have them do the contract? Where are the recyclers gonna go? Right now, we have it with our present contractor, and they take them, and they get the money for it.
Yeah, they take them and get, they take them and they do get the money for them. We get nothing. We've not received a nickel.
I understand, it's in the contract.
We've not received a nickel.
Your Honor.
It was bid that way.
Alderman Moiseo, please, go ahead.
Coach, I was with you before on voting no on this. Alderman Needham, the former alderman, was, also voted no on this. I have talked to him at length at this. He says we have to do it.
You may have to do it, but you better have the rules laid out.
Can I, can I read something, please? SWACO has an agreement with VMI's Recycling Center in Grayslake that pays members who participate in the program a per-ton rebate. For each ton of recyclables directed to the Grayslake facility, currently 34 members participate in this program. In 2012, SWACO members received $572,000 per-ton rebate payments. In 2011, 1.1 million. So far, each dollar that members paid us for the operation and maintenance fee, they received approximately $3 in return in '12 and $6 in '11. For Waukegan specifically, if we'd been participating in the program on a per-ton rebate, we would have approximately $64,000 in '11 and $41,000 in '12. In both years, this would have exceeded our operations and maintenance fee of $29,000. Keep in mind that this is all based on market values, as these commodities, these are commodities, recyclables are commodities, go up and down. So it would cost us $37,000 to join, but with our recyclables, we would be able to make up that fee and maybe get some money out of it. Coach, I voted for it no last time because we didn't get any service for it. There was no, they were, they were charging us, and we weren't getting any service for our residents. I think in this new system, we are gonna get service, plus it's not gonna cost us anything. We can maybe make a little bit of money. If you wanna hold it over to the next and get more information, that's fine.
Yes, I want more answers.
Let's just hold it over, and we'll discuss it later. That's fine.
I like this discussion, you didn't give all the facts. It said $25 per ton, but now it's down to $850 per ton.
It's gone down, correct.
You didn't tell me that when you were just talking.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, this print is small, I can barely see it.
That's a fourth, that's a 75% reduction in the amount of money they got.
Alderman Rivera, please.
I really think...
I'm sorry. Are you done, Larry?
I still have the floor.
No, yeah, you still have the floor, I'm sorry.
Okay, I know, I mean, I get emotional, this, spending money. Okay, I know, I mean, I get emotional, this, spending money, we have to watch what we're doing, you bring back an agreement with the boys from across the street, SWACO, who I don't have a good opinion of, I really don't. I would like to check out their salaries, I'd like to check what everything is, what's our voting rights over there, what's our voting right?
Let's do this, then. So, to get, well, just hold it over. I'll hold it over, I'll hold it over. Hold it over.
What's the present contract with, with our, with our garbage disposal?
Which is coming up.
They're picking it up, our present, if it's coming up, this ain't the time to go in there, then, wait till you get that done, and now you got all the facts lined up.
Right now, right now, these televisions and everything else is killing us, it's killing us, but let's, let's hold it over and we'll discuss it later, let's hold it over.
Alderman Rivera, Alderman Rivera.
Well, first of all, on the Public Works, it's, it's under, it's for discussion only.
It's discussion and a join, discussion and a join.
Well, let me give my opinion on this. Recycling is big business now, okay? Right now, and what value is, and I'm, I'm with the coach, Alderman Tempest, on this one, I used to be for getting into, with SWACO, but I'm sorry, I'm totally against it now, why? Because it's big business, and I'd rather do business with private, with private companies right now. Right now, there's a company that's interested in doing business with the city of Waukegan that's gonna invest four to five million dollars, four to five million dollars. And they're waiting on the decision of us joining SWACO, which might change their decision on buying this property. So, please, you don't think about this. And I know, Mayor, it's been presented, it's been presented to Planning and Zoning, we make this decision on this, that could squelch that hope, I prefer doing business with private business and not with government, governing bodies. So, that's my...
Okay, there is a motion, there is a motion, a request, a request to hold this over, correct?
Alderman May has a question.
Okay, Alderman May.
Just with all due respect to what you're speaking of, Alderman Rivera, not all of us are privy to this, what you're speaking of, so...
Well, all you have to do is talk to your Planning and Zoning Director, Russ Tomlin, and he'll give you the information.
I understand, but I wouldn't, I can't come out of the air with, to ask that question, do you know what I'm saying? How do I know that there's a potential recycler that wants to do business with us?
Well, I can't, you know...
I can't just come out of the air with it, someone needs to tell me that.
Do you know why? Because I'm, I'm always in City Hall finding out what's going on, and that's the reason why I have that information.
What I'm saying is, is if we're gonna vote on something like this, it would be prudent for that information to be disseminated to the entire council in case we weren't privy to that information.
Mayor, Your Honor, it's held over, but I, if we got a company that wants to do that, I would certainly hope you and the Director of Public Works would have a clue what the hell is going on.
Do you know about it?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't know anything about it either.
What's the Planning and Zoning guy doing about it? Why is he involved in it when it should be Director of Public Works? He handles garbage and recycling, not planning and zoning.
Okay, it's been held over.
It's held over.
Ladies and gentlemen...
The point I'm trying to make is, please, the point I'm trying to make is, I, wouldn't you prefer doing business with private business instead of governing bodies that'll tell you what to do? That's what I'm saying. There's more value in dealing with private business than a governing body, there's more value.
If I may make one last comment.
Okay, Alderman Tempest, last remark, please.
One last comment. I remember when SWACO came and was gonna tell us, they were gonna appoint one waste hauler for all the stores in Waukegan, and they would have to use that waste hauler. And that store or that company, like my Super Fresh, they would tell them, you have to use this one, and then the city, you'll get a kickback, you'll get some money back. I said, what happened to the free marketplace? What happened to the different other contractors that wanna get part of the action? It's kept the price down, it's amazing how much better it's kept it down. So, I make my point.
Okay, Tom, there's no need to continue with it, it's gonna be held over, we'll talk about, move on to the next item, please.
Item B, award to bid for the PCB containment cells to the low-qualified bidder from Rivers Bend Engineering of Sternavet, Wisconsin for an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars for the replacement of two PCB treatment cells in ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Why can't we just dump it all out in the middle of the lake and dilute it? Aye.
Roll call, Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Passes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Item, item, item C, draft specification advertised for bids for the repair of our largest in-ground lift toys in the vehicle repair area in ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
That's just voice vote, that's just a draft.
This is a draft, roll call, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item D, draft specification advertised for bids for altitude valve replacements at the booster stations, turbidity meter replacements at the water plant, carbon mixer replacement at the water plant, and the concrete entry stairs at the water plant. Funds for these items are budgeted line item five-five-five-dash-one, excuse me, nine-one-six-zero-two-seven-zero-one-eight, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The draft specification. E, waive the bid procedure and purchase sole source, a used nineteen-ninety-seven Trailking thirty-five-ton low-boy equipment trailer for the Public Works Department for an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand five hundred. This would be purchased through Westside Tractor of O'Conde, Illinois. Funds for this purchase are available in line item one-hundred-nine-one-one-zero-two-five-four-seven-six, and ISO move.
Second. A motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Cunningham, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Passes.
That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
New business approval of payroll dated six-twenty-eight, two thousand thirteen, in the amount of one-million-three-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Motion by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman Newsome, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated seven, oh, one thirteen, in the amount of one-million-four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Motion by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman Newsome, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Approval of block parties, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Cunningham, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, approval and reaffirm the Director of Finance's authority to execute a loan commitment letter from Lake Forest Bank and Trust Company dated April twelfth, two thousand thirteen, for the purpose of financing a land purchase arrangement for economic development projects. Tina, do you wanna explain that?
In the appropriation ordinance, and then also, there's been council meetings where there's been discussion about the city acquiring some land on the lakefront. So, the appropriation ordinance allowed for kind of some room there, up to three million dollars to do that, but since we didn't have a fixed purchase price, we didn't know the exact amount, and it wasn't flushed out enough to actually do a bond issue, I secured a couple of quotes to do a note directly with the bank. We only received two quotes back, the best quote was from Lake Forest Bank, which is actually Wintrust, and what they quoted was for up to five million dollars, it'd be a three-year note, it would have semi-annual interest payments on it, it would be a general obligation of the city, so it would be repaid through property taxes. And the rate, if we close on the loan, if we actually execute the purchase, would be one-point-eight percent per year.
So, that's good.
If we close after September first, the rate would be the LIBOR swap rate, plus one-point-three-two percent, but not more than two-point, two-point-ten percent. This will expire in October, we can renegotiate the terms, given what's been going on with the interest rates. I don't know that, initially, the plan would be to take this out with a longer-term bond issue, but given these interest rates and what's been happening in the bond market, we'd probably be better to just leave the note for the full three years at this point. If the deal doesn't close, the note doesn't get issued. So, this is simply giving us the flexibility to have the cash at closing. We would have to come back with bond counsel and corporation counsel because it would have an impact on our levy for the next levy year.
Thank you, Tina.
Boyers gotta get paid.
This, this has to do with the property within the appropriation ordinance, we budgeted ten million dollars, three of it for land purchase, this is in lieu of, Tina had a long discussion, we had a long discussion about this, this is probably the most prudent way to do this to begin with, and that way, we won't be paying interest on money we don't have yet. So, motion by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman May, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco. Alderman Rivera. Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Passes, Your Honor.
Item E, resolution as presented, authorizing acquisition of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, namely, six-forty-eight Lenox Avenue from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for eighteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item F, resolution as presented, authorizing the sale of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, including twelve-sixteen Hickory Street. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Falco, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item G, to approve raffle sale applications with the Waukegan Park District. Motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Rivera, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Ordinance is a resolution, a resolution, city of Waukegan supporting the Waukegan Regional Airport show by authorizing the temporary closing of Green Bay Road, we do this every year for the airport. Motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Conkin, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
What did, is that, Your Honor, just curious, what date?
I don't know what the date is, David, do you know the date?
September seventh.
September seventh.
Labor Day weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Torres, you're a gentleman and a scholar. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
All set? Alderman's time, Mr. Clerk, please proceed.
Alderman May.
Thank you. We've had a busy night, I, I had all kinds of statement prepares, if you, if you know me, on Mondays, I spend the entire day thinking about city council, going over what we're, what's on our agenda, weighing, you know, what faces our city. The theme for me today was integrity, and I'm very encouraged after tonight's meeting. I was reading the principles, well, I'll start with River Road, I was reading the guiding principles today for River Road, and the first principle is protect the unique rural character of the River Road corridor. And the, and on the other end, the last guiding principle is to encourage the highest quality in community design and home construction to match and preserve the established character of the River Road corridor. I'd like to congratulate the council for maintaining our integrity and honoring these guiding principles, which I believe we did tonight. Chief of Police, I'm sorry that the city of Waukegan had endured another blemish, the men and women of our police department deserve so much better, they deserve solid, stable leadership. They've been through so much in the last few years with public embarrassment and traumatic incidents in the department. I just wish for them to have peace and solid, stable leadership from this point forward. And so, I just, once again, wanna thank the city council and Mayor Motley for retaining integrity of this body. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
Alderman Falco.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna miss coming to these council meetings, the next few meetings, without all the River Road personnel and the people out there. I mentioned this before, I hadn't seen councils stuffed with people as I have with this, with this issue coming up. Though I didn't vote the way most of you wanted, I enjoyed working with Carl Lowes, Jeff Lovinger, Chuck Lackey, and the Attorney Joe Morrison, I really enjoyed it. You, you residents out there did it the correct way, you came here, you expressed your issues, you did it in an orderly fan, fashion, and you didn't get out of line, and that's what we're all looking for. And though we don't all agree together, we, sometimes we tend to disagree, the council voted the way you wished to vote. And I, I just appreciate the way you guys handled yourself, thank you. The, again, the, the police department spent twenty-five thousand dollars tonight on the dog and a couple other items, and again, it came through the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund, it didn't cost the citizens of Waukegan a dime, it was twenty-five thousand dollars worth, so my hat's off to our agents, our agents, DEA, Customs, and our own narcotics unit here in the city of Waukegan. Again, I wanna reiterate what Alderman May said about our unfortunate problems with the Chief of Police and the city of Waukegan having integrity to do what we did tonight. The chief was a friend of mine, unfortunately, he, and I don't wanna say may, but evidently what I know now misrepresented some of his military experience, but I wanna tell each and every one of you out there, he was the right man for the job at this state of the Waukegan Police Department, and I'm sorry to see him go, but he was the right man for the job. I want everybody to know that, that's all I have, sir.
Alderman Rivera.
I concur with the alderman on Chief Kerkorian, he's a good man, the right decision was made. I know the mayor, you went through a lot these past couple of weeks, but the right decision was made. You know, it's unfortunate, but, you know, integrity, as Alderman May said, you know, that's very important, so it was a good, good decision. In terms of the River Road project, boy, I tell you, talk about, you know, going through a lot of pressure the last, I don't know, especially the last six, seven months. You know, you look at, you know, a project and, you know, you, you know, things change from two thousand and six to now, and, and you look at it, and how is this gonna, you know, be good for the city of Waukegan, the entire city? I mean, I looked at it as, you're talking about a thirty-million-plus-dollar project for the city of Waukegan, you're talking about bringing in, you know, sewer and water, you're talking about additional new property tax revenue. So, there was a lot of good things, you know, about this project as well. But at the same time, uh, I knew the last, especially the last, especially tonight, you know, when they're asking me to, you know, to hold this over again, and I knew, and I'm saying to myself, why am I gonna hold this over again? When I knew I didn't have the votes, and plus, having the River Road people come out here again, you know, to go through this again, and they, and I gotta commend you. You're very, you're very organized, so I commend you very much out there, uh. So, then I had the Corporation Council and the mayor asking me, you know, not to hold it over, that maybe the other way to go with the, uh, you know, mending the, uh, the, the ordinance. It was tough, you know, it was tough, and knowing that you've seen everybody up here sup, uh, opposing the project, you know, there's people that I've been hearing, oh, we, we support you, Ralph, you know, the, the project is good for the city, but no one was up here talking about it. So, and I've always said, you know, this, I commend the council for making the decision, but you're not, you were never hurting me. I'm just up here believing in a project that could well serve the entire city of Waukegan. But really, you didn't really hurt me, you, you really hurt the, the taxpayers of this community, especially passing up on a, on a project that could have been very prosperous for the city. So again, you know, I congratulate, you know, the River Road community, they really did come together and work together, so, and now I don't have to have people coming here anymore and looking at me very angry, you know, apologize, you know, for that, but I felt that it was something that I believed in, and I took the courage, had courage to, to fight for something that I believed that could have really helped the, uh, the entire city of Waukegan. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
I'm gonna speak on, on some things that, uh, that I talked about doing, um, uh, the Miro campaign, and that was about leaders. Leaders make decisions that other people don't want to make. That's why we're leaders. I think tonight was a prime example of strong, decisive leadership from our mayor to our council, and that's what I'm excited about tonight. Uh, obviously, we had difference of opinion and one world, but the main important thing tonight that I think we have all grown from is that leaders have emerged on the city council. That is why I became an Alderman, that is why I became a leader in this community, and I'm expect, uh, and I expect for more strong leadership decisions to be made. Obviously, those decisions has, gonna come with disappointments for some, for some and joy for others. But what is most important, you have within this city government, people who are acting and being like strong leaders to move this community. And I think that should be commended, and for our, uh, the citizens from River Road to North Side to South Side, understand, these are not easy decisions that we have to make all the time, but we make them with the best interest of the City of Waukegan at heart, and we make them as leaders. Thank you.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to mention a couple things. First off, we heard about it earlier today, was the art space, it opened up and they had their official grand opening. Uh, stopped there Saturday afternoon, and there were some fantastic apartments and fantastic, uh, displays of art that were out there on the, uh, throughout the building. It's really pretty impressive what they've done with the Carter Hotel, and if, I'm sorry that anybody who didn't get there didn't get a chance to see it, but, uh, I'm sure that the art in the building and the art space is all available, and there will be chances for us to go over there and see it and, uh, see it for ourselves, and please, if you had a chance, go down there. Secondly, I'd like to say, uh, it was a great parade, it was a great day for a parade yesterday to all those that came down, it was fantastic. Uh, anybody wants to know, I was in charge of the weather, so it was perfect. Uh, we had a great time. Uh, we did have a couple of big gaps that were, uh, attainable or, that can be attributed to the city council, but I hope we can work on that so it doesn't happen next year. Uh, we were toward the front of a gap saying, stick around, there's still a parade coming. Uh, everybody had a good time. I got to walk with Chief Kerkorian, and I've spoken with him a couple of times, uh, before this about all the issues that were, uh, confronting him. Uh, he also talked to me that these things were starting to affect his family and his kids, and for that, I'm sorry that this happened. And I'm sorry I agree with Alderman Valco that this was probably the right guy to run the department at this time. He's a very, uh, motivated individual, I think he would have done well. I'm sorry that he had to go, but I'm glad that he offered up his resignation with no arguments and everything, he's gonna walk away and he's gonna be okay, I hope, truly hope that he will be. Thank you, that's all I have.
Moiseo.
A couple of things. River Road. I sort of look at it this way, if you live next to any vacant land, I think you have to understand, at some time, it may be developed unless you own it. It may be developed. So I think we have to sometimes keep that in mind, and, because vacant land, when you put things on it, it increases its value and that increases money and everybody's looking for that. So there's always, from now until whenever, there's always gonna be fight for that, for developing open land, no matter where it is. With that said, one of the reasons that was maybe driving this was that we need money. The city would have developed some income from this, and we're looking for ways to develop more revenue for the city. We can't cut anymore. We've told you that, we cannot cut anymore. We cut almost fifty percent of our workforce and still delivered the same amount of service. So when people come up here and tell me, you gotta cut, you gotta cut, you gotta cut, we have cut, I'm tired of hearing about, you gotta cut. We have cut, down to nothing, and still delivered service. So I'm tired of people coming up here telling me, you gotta cut. We've done that. So now we gotta find other ways to run the city, try to get other revenue streams, so we have to understand that. Can't have it both ways. We can't have it both ways, we need to understand that. Uh, and the thing with the chief, I think, I hope we did our, our due diligence, I think if, everybody would hope if they were in that situation, that the people in charge would make sure that they looked at everything before they made a knee-jerk reaction or reactionary reaction, because I think that's what some of the people I talked to, maybe we didn't move as, as fast as we should have on it, but I kept thinking to myself, when you're gonna do this to somebody, you gotta make sure it's true. You gotta make sure. You gotta make sure, 'cause I would want that afforded to me, and I think anybody out here would want that afforded to them, you want to make sure that what is being said, what's be, what's happening is being true. So, especially up here as leaders, we have to, I think, sometimes do that, we have to step back, be the conscious, and make sure that things are thorough and that they're done, and make sure that things are true. Because when you do that, maybe it's not as fast as people would have liked, but I still think that enables people to trust the government, at least try to trust people, 'cause I kept telling them, we're gonna keep looking at this, we have to look at it, you know, just because we're not doing anything or doesn't perceive that we're doing anything in the public, doesn't mean that we're not, we're not wrestling with this and we're not trying to do what's right. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
I would first like to thank, um, our neighborhood, uh, police officer, Officer Roy Drexler, and the code compliance officer that serves the fourth ward north of Washington Street. There was an issue on Butrick, and, um, Officer Drexler was the first one to, uh, address it, and there were other, there were housing issues there, and he promptly called Miguel Rivera, and these two guys worked together and they hauled the landlord into the city, I, apparently today. Lot of repairs need to be made on this house, and, uh, I was particularly pleased, and I'm sure the residents, the neighbors, next door neighbors especially, are grateful for the service these two men provided there. Pollution. I read an article today, BP had put a billion dollars into their refinery in Whiting, Indiana, at the bottom of the lake. Well, mercury, the government, they put out twenty-three parts per trillion, mercury. The government wants them to get down to one part per trillion. Now, I can't even conceive what twenty-three little specks amongst the trillion would look like, but I don't think it's the pollution that's killing us anymore, I think it's our government, misguided government bureaucrats in the EPA. I grew up in the sixties in North Chicago, and I can remember the coal man coming to my grandparents' house, dumping coal and putting coal in the stoker. I didn't do that, my father did. And it burnt, and it went up, uh, up and out a chimney that was forty feet off the ground. I don't recall anyone that I went to school with that had asthma, that was very rare in the sixties. We, we, we burned leaded gas, asbestos break shoes. There weren't a bunch of sick people walking around in the sixties, but now we seem to have a lot of sick people walking around today. People like, come with the Sierra Club, but Midwest generation creates their, triggers their asthma. I'm not buying that. We have cheap electricity in this country because we have a lot of coal, and if we want to follow Germany's model, which they pay twice the electric rates of anyone else in Europe, then we're gonna suffer their consequences. German companies right now are looking to move to America because we have cheap electricity. Any, any corp, any industry that is, uses a lot of electricity, that's where you want to go, right? I, 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 I wish people would read more, use a little more common sense, and, and speak up. We need people to go back to work in this country. Wind turbines, solar panels, that's what Germany and Spain and, uh, England have done. They're killing themselves over there, and we're gonna kill ourselves over here, along with the hundreds of thousands of migratory birds and bats that these queazing arts of the air are killing on a yearly basis. No fines, golden eagles, condors, not one fine is levied against the wind turbine industry because they're protected. Apparently, our birds are no longer protected. One bird lands in a, in a, uh, a pool in a, on a, uh, a rigging area, massive fine. Bird gets electrocuted on a high-power line, they pay a fine for that. I think we better start standing up for ourselves and doing what's right. Let's start extracting our own natural resources here and try to put some of our people back to work. Food stamps and, uh, public assistance is just not a replacement for a job. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. Um, I hosted a ward meeting last week, Thursday, and I'd like to, if I start naming staff by name, I'll probably forget someone, so I wanted to, um, thank the mayor, city clerk, treasurer, corporation council, Noel, police commanders, um, all of you that were there, you know, you were there. I appreciate you being there, couldn't have done it without you. A special thanks to the residents of the fifth ward that came out and attended the meeting, couldn't have done it without them as well, uh, and to Community Action Partnership for doing a great job with the food. I also had, um, a block party in my ward this weekend, uh, which was called a tenant appreciation. Owners, apartment owners over on Walnut, Linden, and Edwards decided to have a tenant appreciation for their tenants. They wanted them to come out and get to know each other, so I wanted to thank them for doing that, and also for Commander Florip, Sergeant Kelly, and our fifth ward officer, Officer Roscoe, that was there on hand with the police bus, had the fire trucks out and ambulance, so they participated very well with the kids, uh, gave them tours, let them get into the ambulance, the fire trucks, so I really appreciate these apartment owners, they're really working to turn that area around, and it has, uh, improved tremendously over the last couple of years, so my hat's off to them. And, um, special thanks to all my family and friends and neighbors that participated in the Independence Day Parade yesterday that walked along with me, so that's all I have.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, uh, the parade was a great success. It really brings a lot of Waukegan residents together. I noticed the Long Sheridan Road, a lot of parties in the different lawns, people getting together to watch the parade, and it does bring our community together in a nice way. I thought it was a great parade. Uh, I really thank the park district for their helping that, and also Public Works for getting the barricades out there, and I see they have the curbs all painted nice and brand-new yellow, they really made the route look beautiful. Uh, thank you, Tom. Uh, River Road, I need to speak on that, but it kind of finally came to a conclusion in what we put those people through. They came, and they came, and they came, and they came. Committee meetings, through the council meeting, held over, back to committee meeting, back to the council, and I want to commend Alderman Rivera for bringing it to a final vote tonight. It needed to come at that point. River Road, when that project was started, I was committee chairman back in oh-eight, they wanted to come into Waukegan, they wanted eighty homes, we said twenty. We compromised at forty. Our one zoning on about seventy-five-foot nice-sized lots, nobody complained, they thought it was fair. And then we came upon now, what you went through is not fair, but you know, I'm glad in one way, you all know you're in Waukegan now out there, we got that established, and we, we love you, the council bashed you, they came, they came together for you, and, you are an important part of Waukegan, you are our jewel, we need you. My area is what it is, you know, we'll deal with it, we'll get it straight, we'll keep working at it, but we need you, and we want you downtown, we want you, as Diane so, put it so well tonight, Diane Vareti, and I, I, your thoughts in regards to this matter, very important, she lives up north of the golf course, I could understand if they wanted to put an apartment building next to her home, that'd be terrible, that'd be terrible if they went our five zoning there, it'd be horrible. So, she did speak on your behalf, and I, I commend her for that. Uh, my next idea to talk about, Mayor, I want to commend you for your leadership, uh, you just took over, it's a new job for you, he puts hours and hours on it, and he asks me yell in his office, I get to yell, I get to shout, he wants to know how I feel, and I'm very happy that you allow me to do that, because if you hear each Alderman out, you'll be able to make better decisions, I'm sure, I'm really sure, and I appreciate, uh, your kindness to me, I, I appreciate that very much. Alley's, I've got problems in my alleys, they're overgrown, we used to have summer kids come in, give them a job cleaning the alleys. I was in an alley the other day with my clippers cutting away, they're overgrown so bad, you can hardly get a car through them. Uh, we, we need to somehow go back to the days that we could maybe get the youth corps to do this, or some organization to do, give them a waiver or something to get them going ahead and cleaning them, because we do have some civil organizations that I'm sure would do it. In the past, I've put a newsletter out in, in the alley, said, we're getting out on Saturday morning, I have a truck there, and we're gonna clean the alley, if you care about your neighborhood, join us, and it works sometimes. So I wanted to talk about that, and then probably the last thing, I think one of the most important things we have going for us is Neighborhood Watch, neighbors getting together to take care of each other, look out for each other. We have a fine police department, a fine Neighborhood Watch group that, that do a wonderful job at those meetings, and, uh, I'm gonna encourage more neighborhoods in my area to continue, I know Lisa's done a good job, and then I, I've heard about that, and, uh, it's just a good way of getting people together and to care about more about Waukegan and look out for each other. With that, I'm glad everything's behind us now, we move forward, and I want to commend Mayor Motley for the hours and time that he puts in, and I'm so happy he has his right-hand man, our corporation council, Steve Martin. Was that your house that went on the market tonight?
It's twelve sixteen.
You didn't say nothing, I thought that was your old house. Used to live in my ward, is why I kind of like him. Okay, well, thank you very much, Your Honor.
And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to make two comments. First of all, those of you who live in River Road, I really appreciate your honesty and your commitment to the city. Those of you who did come to my office and voiced your opinions, uh, to me, were very respectful, very kind, very considerate, very compassionate, I appreciate that. I promised you that I would support reasonable, reasonable development, I think I have shown that I'm honest and open about that. I, uh, I, I really appreciate the fact that you came to the council meeting, voiced your opinions in respectful manner, uh, we need more of that in our community, we need you to come into Waukegan and partake of some of the events that we, that we do here. I would love to see you, now that this event is over, I would love to see you in my office. As most of you know, my door is always open to anyone in the City of Waukegan. I start work at seven AM, and I get home when I get home, and that's the way life is. So please, uh, I'm giving you an open invitation to come to my office, and if you choose to yell at me like Larry does, so be it, that's okay. The second issue I'd like to discuss with you is I made a, I made an appointment of... The second issue I'd like to discuss with you is I made a, I made an appointment of Commander Kerkorian to the position of chief of police. I can tell you with all honesty, that was the right selection at the time. We all have faults and frailties, me included. Something in his past came up that we weren't aware of. I can tell you this, it took us a little bit longer than it probably should have, but rest assured, myself and Steve Martin, the corporation council, did our, everything we could to substantiate the claims and the accusations to the best of our ability. Once we determined what had actually occurred, and some, some were rumors, some were hearsay, some were innuendo, but once we established what had actually occurred and how it occurred, we knew that we were committed to do our job and do what we had to do regardless of our friendships, our partnerships. Steve and I were both policemen. Art was a policeman, Bill was a policeman. The bond between us is immense. Those of you who had friends that you've lived your whole life with can understand that, but I'm very proud of the fact that I had an opportunity to talk to every Alderman individually during this whole process. I talked to them, I asked their opinion, I asked their concerns, I asked their issues. Collectively, these nine men and women were tremendous in helping us formulate a position here. So, rest assured, this administration and these nine Alderman people are gonna do what's only in the best interest of our community, and I can assure you of that. So, that being said, motion adjourned by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Conkin. All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.[1794.61][1794.61][applause][1795.61]